All those meeting in order, please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is public input. Start with Lee Gruber on Silver City Clay Festival.
Please push way forward, okay? Yes. Mr. Mayor, town councillors, Mr. Brown, Mrs. Scavran, Ms. Ann Mackey. I wanted to come here this evening just to give you a bit of a follow-up on the Clay Festival. The town was wonderfully supportive of this event and I wanted to pay my respects by just giving you a little bit of information about the event itself. And I left with you a brochure. We printed 3,000 of them and there are 200 left, so somebody got that information, which is good to know. And I also wanted to read to you something that was sent to us by a gentleman named Patrick Crabbe. He's a professor at University of California, somewhere in Southern California, professor of ceramics. And he came here to teach a workshop at WNMU in the expressive arts department. So we worked in collaboration with that department and it was a wonderful experience. And he said hello to all. "A sign of something profound and memorable is something that sinks into your soul forever. It's like a good book or movie that stays with you long after it's over. My thoughts continue to linger on so many great images of gorgeous New Mexico with the wonderful ambiance of Silver City, the supporters of Clay Festival, lectures, workshops, dinner parties, and more. I want to thank you all for your gracious, open hospitality and friendships. I had one great time and it was due to all of your supportive efforts." Signed, Patrick Crabbe. So I thought it would be nice for you to have something positive to look at this evening. The event started with the poker tournament on Saturday. Again, the hope was that someday people would come here, play poker, spend the weekend and stay the week. And that's still the goal for this festival. We had lots of wonderful participants and it was a great evening. That was great fun. And on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we hosted workshops. There were four major workshops. All of those workshops, we tripled the number of people who had come last year. People came from, to take the workshops, from as far as Canada, Nebraska, North Carolina, California. I was quite amazed. The workshops were full. So we basically had 45, 46 people who came to Silver City on Tuesday and stayed until Sunday. So that was a huge change from last year. We had a series of lectures and panel discussions. Dr. Bedison was instrumental in helping us bring four superior archaeologists to Silver City who lectured and were part of this panel discussion that she led on Saturday afternoon. We had another panel discussion about Mado Ortiz on Sunday. There were eight lectures. There was a street dance Saturday night. Hundreds of people came down to listen to Brandon Pearl and the band. The people who had stayed on were just, they kept saying to me, "Wow, this is Silver City." Yes, this is Silver City. It was, it was really a wonderful event and we'll keep trying to build upon it and make it better each year. This year, for the first time, Glenwood Library participated, Bayard Library participated, children went to classes, clay classes in the morning and afternoon. Those classes were full. We also had something called Mud Fun over the weekend where kids just go down under the portico at what used to be yada, yada yarn and just have a great time with clay. It just was a wonderful event. So I thank you again for your support and I'm a little bit tired, but I think, I think I can get it together for next year again. I hope so. Do you have any questions at all?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Dr. Martinez.
Good evening. And as I had said to a few of you, it's good to be home. I've returned from Central America. One thing that I do when I'm out there for a long time is I review what has been taking place within our community, so I've been doing that. And again, Art Martinez, retired university professor. I wanted to, to express, as I indicated there, that we have some concert of agreement and I think that we'll see that this will come through. And we're keeping here tonight on that positive path. First, the tax which had been passed on July 10th, I, like you, all or most of you, object to what the county commissioners have done and I wanted for you to, to know that. In addition, I concur with your position and some of the discussion that has been taking place on the airline with whom you will be contracting to determine several things, one of which will be whether we will continue to fly into Phoenix or to be looking at the county community at large more closely and working for them the best that can be. And we know very well that, I know over 40 years that I've seen that the community flies into Albuquerque by and large and it makes sense. So I want to just say that one of the things that I objected to with reference to what the county had done was they worked in a very background way with reference to input and hearing what the citizens and residents in the county have, have to say and whether or not they were in agreement or objection and so forth. There was definitely not enough of that. It was very background. And I, like many, do not care for that sort of thing. And I think we ought to be much more out into the open and be more responsible in terms of our community. And I always said that, and I agree, that the county was not going to be taken off the listing for receiving from the state of New Mexico. They, they would continue to receive those hold harmless subsidies and be able to go forward with their budgetary concerns. It was Silver City, our local municipality here, and the others in the county who might very likely be losing their hold harmless subsidies from the state. And that's of concern for me for several reasons. And I know I don't have a lot of time, but, but to say that we have less than the 10,000, well, we were more than 10,000 and therefore that would be the reason that that could happen to us. So I want to express a two desire that I've heard from many folks in the county and that is that since it is quite likely that the municipality, Silver City, will be losing its hold harmless, harmless subsidy, that you really take into consideration that we had this fiasco take place over at the county level, which many folks in the county disagree with. And we hope that it will not be necessary in our future that you will find it necessary to follow through on, on passing something like this in the future. Let's, okay, if I just could say one last thing.
One last thing, very quickly.
Okay. And that is, what I am saying is if we can hold, if we can hold our taxpayers harmless, we would very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Lucy Whitmarsh, Bash on Broadway.
Hello, I'm Lucy Whitmarsh and I'm representing the Silver City Main Street. I'm the president of the board and I just wanted to let everybody know about two important events downtown that I hope everybody will be able to attend. And one is on, on this coming Saturday, the 16th, and it's the fourth year for the Bash on Broadway. And it's where we close down Broadway and have a block party there. And part of the intent of it is to welcome the students from Western New Mexico University. It's also a move-in weekend for the students at the university and so some of them may have also their parents with them. And we want them to have a really positive experience and feel like that the community is welcoming the students to, to our town. And to start it off with, President Shepherd is going to give a State of the University address outside at the Silver City Museum and then after, that would be at 5:30. And then from 6:30 to 8:30 is the block party on Broadway. So it's really be a lot of fun and I hope everybody can come to it. And then the other thing that, or one of the other things that Silver City Main Street is working on is the Taste of Downtown. And that's going to be on September 6th. And it's going to be an event where people can come and get samples of things that the different restaurants offer so that they can, can have the experience of knowing what some of our local food culture and diversity that we have in our food culture, to get some samples and see if they can maybe find some things that they have not discovered before. And also, we promote this event widely in the Tucson and El Paso and Los Cruces and Albuquerque markets so that we can bring visitors in to also appreciate the dynamic food culture that we do have going on downtown. And the time for that's going to be from 11 to 2. And it's also going to be on Broadway with, with music and a band and tasting and, and other activities going on for that special event. So we really hope everybody can come out and help celebrate our downtown. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is council comments. Council Bedison.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one quick comment. With all of the chipseering that the town's been doing, I encourage folks to please drive slowly because of all the fresh gravel. Speeding down freshly laid gravel is not necessarily conducive to people's windows, whether they're in their cars or windshields or their houses, so. Because I've had a number of folks in my district comment that they've had rocks come flying and hitting things. So far, nothing's broken, but let's, let's just try to keep it down until, I think the street sweep will be out at some point too?
Actually, I did listen when Jack did some, we know, she said the project would have been ready.
Yes.
Because of the rain. Actually, it wasn't. So they did finish today at noon. They'll be out tomorrow sweeping.
Great.
Okay. And then they'll be back out on the 24th of the month to do the fox seal. And once they do the fox seal, they'll seal any loose chips or anything and it should be back to, you know, a better street than what they had before.
Yeah, before, which is great. So, so yes, just so you know, I wanted to please drive slowly. And while it looks kind of like a little runway right now down those streets that have been chip sealed, there are still stop signs. And so I would just encourage you to stop at the stop signs as well, not just kind of do like runway stuff down the, down the street. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, do you want to, I had my first conversation with the councillor meeting and I want to thank the folks who came and I want to thank them for putting me on the front page and back page of the Daily Press and giving my friend of mine the opportunity to call me a media hog, which I'm really not. But thank you to everyone who came. I had a wonderful time, got a lot of great commentary and I'll be doing this every three to four months. So please keep coming and having conversations with me. Thank you.
Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor. Since town and state are going to be doing the Hudson Street Bridge, I would like to ask Mr. Brown if he can have some sort of barriers on Cooper Street like they had at the park, the pit, at the skate park, because there are some houses that are lower. And also, I did mention to Mr. Brown and to the mayor that hopefully that the fire department can have some sort of a substation since they're going to be doing the bridge on, on the, for about a year. And the traffic to Cooper Street is going to be very, very rough. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to highlight to me, this last week I attended the Friends and Volunteers Center's event that they had to introduce the volunteer center to the community a little bit more widely. The work that Aresha Edwards and her staff and her volunteers are doing is incredible. They're doing so many things for the community, community gardening, they do Alimento para los niños, which is a back-up program to feed children on the weekends when they're at home, things like that. But they're also looking for donations of money and time. So if you are so inclined, they're located at 501 East 13th Street and their phone number is 575-388-2988. So give them a call and they'll find something for you to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody need round two? Uh, the only thing I have is I'd like to let the public know that our next meeting is next Wednesday, August 20th at 6:00 PM in this building. It's, uh, we switched from the Tuesday meeting in two weeks due to, well, everybody being out of town, but I believe four of us going to the municipal league annual meeting. Outside of that, we'll move on to any changes in the agenda? Approval of the minutes? Council Bedison.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to approve the minutes of the regular town council meeting of July 22nd, 2014. Councilor.
We have a motion, a second, for approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, July 22nd, 2014. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is staff reports. You have to request something else to be thrown in the chipseer project to, we have to talk about that. Lisa Martin?
Yes, sir.
Any other staff reports? Uh, Mr. Stanley, did you want to introduce yourself at all with your new position?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Jerry Sully. I am a retired juvenile probation officer who recently was lured back into the system to work with the Sixth Judicial Court, Grant County. And my assignment, my, my role will be to, uh, community bridge building between our youth and the community. And I've had a very positive response as I've met with people from various municipalities and met with Mr. Brown, your town manager. And we had a very positive conversation regarding how the town can partner with juvenile probation and other youth organizations within the community to not only beautify and to make our community more safe, but also to build skills within our youth. For many years, I served as chair of the Community Health Council as well. And the surveys that came, uh, community surveys that we did indicated that we did not have a real strong skilled workforce that was up in the coming generation. And so that's one of the targets that we're, goals and aims that we're working toward is to help build skills within our youth. And we've already identified some areas that we can be able to help our youth. Partner with your town, our town, to do some things that perhaps Alex has wanted to do for years, but just simply didn't have manpower to do. And we can provide some of that manpower. And so I look forward to great work in relationship with the town of Silver City. Any questions?
No? Thank you. We appreciate you taking on this new role.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Approval, disapproval of bid number 14/15-1, Silco interior renovations. Mr. Brown?
At the last council meeting, this item was brought for review and at that point we asked you to postpone it, to table it until, so we could look for some additional funding. As of this point, some additional funding sources have been identified, but no, no funding has been committed to the project yet. But because there is a portion of the project that we can move forward with, that we have some historical funding and it does have historical preservation funding and it does have a deadline to be used and spent, so we will request that all bids be rejected because of the lack of funding to complete, to award the entire bid. And we will move forward to go out to, for ready proposals because the scope of the smaller project is within scope that we can go out for a ready proposal and move forward with that small portion before we continue working towards finding the funding for the entire project.
Any questions for Alex? Councilor.
On this situation here, if it will be a complete, being, doing that bid again?
Well, yes, we will absolutely enter the entire bid process, but the portion that I'm talking about, the historical portion, will be removed from, from the future bid.
Any other questions? Any comments from the public?
You'd probably like to look at the hat instead of the head here. I'm Mike Roberts. I'm owner of Haven's Construction. I've been the successful bidder twice now. And at this point, I question why, if I'm the successful bidder, why the city doesn't at least allow us to try to negotiate the contract for the portion that's available.
Because we could only negotiate within 10% of that available funding. And the bid was above 10% of what's available for the project, so, so we can't negotiate. If it was closer to the total, we would be able to negotiate, but we can't.
Council Bedison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to state that that's just because that's due to state statutes and purchasing and procuring and we have to follow those.
We follow, because we're home, we wear our chemical code, but in most cases such as this one, we follow the state statute. So, you know, we haven't done anything that is out of the ordinary and this directly follows state statute, just as you said.
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, to make sure, you know, that that was clarified because it is unfortunate that our hands are tied in this instance that we can't really do the negotiations because the current bid is over that 10% of available funding. So, thank you.
It is a very good comment and a very good question. I'm glad that we got that clarification. I wasn't sure of that exact technical detail, but hopefully, from what I've seen, hopefully the bids, the future bids will come in very similar and hopefully we actually have the money so we can finalize the deal in the future and get this thing put in place because it is vital that this community gets a theater. Going two years now without a theater in a town that's had a theater for the entire century before is almost not acceptable.
I just wanted to add that the deal was good for 90 days. And so, you know, we could have held it another meeting or two looking, but because of the deadline from that other grant and being able to complete that portion of the project prior to losing that funding, we didn't want to continue to look for additional funding while we're still, while we're losing some of the funding. So we want to keep this thing going.
Which is this, which is the, the grant in question?
From the Historic Preservation Society. It's, it's 3...
Um, it's for $59,000 and it's from the Historic Preservation Division of the Department of Cultural Affairs of the State of New Mexico is the funding source.
So at this point, that's about 10% of the available funds that we do have. So we definitely want to make sure that we don't lose that. Otherwise, we're, we're getting deeper into the hole.
We're getting ourselves deeper into the hole than what we are now.
Any other questions? For Alex or anybody else? I want to hear the motion. Council Bedison.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to reject bid number 14/15-1, Silco interior renovations per staff recommendation.
One second. We have a motion, a second, to reject bid number 14/15-1, Silco interior renovations per staff recommendation. Any further discussion? We have a motion, a second, to reject bid number 14/15-1, Silco interior renovations per staff recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, under new business, approval, disapproval of an agreement between the Town of Silver City and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, council number 18, local number 3370, from July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015.
I'm going to counsel the agreement between the ASME and the Town of Silver City expires, expired June 30th. We had negotiated a one-year renewal with some minor changes. The minor changes that, that took, that were approved by the union itself, they The money changes that were approved by the union itself, they voted and accept the changes, were some issues with sick leave, and we both identified that there was some abuses to it, and there was opportunity for abuse provided in the contract, and so they agreed that there was some changes needed. And the only other thing that was changed as far as monetary was overtime bills. And basically, as I did with all the other unions, is I told them, you know, there's not funds available for increases, so if you want to do something that changes anything financially within the agreement, you're going to need to give up something to get something, in more precision. They gave up their overtime bills, which was primarily within the utilities department, sometimes within the streets department, and those only came when there was four hours of overtime work, which the utilities department does quite frequently because of water breaks. The streets department does it usually during the winter, when there's, you know, snow and such. So it was primarily within the utilities department, but in exchange for giving that, which was a mess to administratively to work with as well, which we both agreed to, we had ten dollars accorded to their longevity pay, so that's what they gave up in the shift meals across a broader spectrum of the employees within the union. And so basically, that's what was negotiated, and a one-year extension to the end of two thousand fifteen.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Edson?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve an agreement between the Town of Silver City and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council number eighteen, Local number thirty-three seventy, from July one, two thousand fourteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Council Bedison?
Mr. Mayor, a second for motion stated.
We have a motion, a second, for approval of an agreement between the Town of Silver City and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council number eighteen, Local number thirty-three seventy, from July first, two thousand fourteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Any further discussion? I have a motion, a second, as previously read. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, approval disapproval of the selection of a voting delegate and alternate to vote at the New Mexico Municipal League's annual conference. I'll entertain any motions or...
Mr. Mayor?
Council Edson?
I move to select as voting delegate, Michael Morones, and as alternate to vote at the New Mexico Municipal League, Cynthia Bedison, during the annual conference.
Councilor Edson? I'll second it. We have a motion, a second, to select myself, Michael Morones, as the voting delegate, and Council Cynthia Bedison as the alternate to vote at the New Mexico Municipal League's annual conference. Is there any further discussion or any potential nominations? Council Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let the other council members that are attending the conference know that they're welcome to sit behind the voting delegates in a cordonmouth section and listen to the business meeting and how votes are taken. As alternate delegate, in the past, I've done that, and it's actually, you get to hear the discussions and presentations that are made by the different individuals that are running for municipal league office. So I encourage you to attend a business meeting just to see how your municipal league works. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any further discussion? We have a motion, a second, to select Mayor Michael Morones as the voting delegate and Council Cynthia Bedison as the alternate to vote at the New Mexico Municipal League's annual conference. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor?
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor? Any opposed? We adjourn.